Elevator wars. Down until September.
Here.
No, it's eight stories, eight levels anyways. People getting good exercise.
Good evening.
Where is it?
Okay, it's not five thirty yet. There's nobody on Zoom, um, nobody zooming in? Okay. Okay, we'll get started. Welcome everyone, including Mr. Roger Nichols to our March twenty fifth city council meeting. The city council of the city of the DOWs will now meet in an executive session pursuant to O R S one ninety-two dot six six zero two F, which allows the council to meet in executive session to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend an executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session except the state. The general subject of the session is previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. We expect to return an open session in ten to fifteen minutes. So with that, let's adjourn into the conference room and we will be back. Roll the call.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ready.
Councillor Long, present. Councillor McLaughlin. Councillor Runyon.
Present.
Councillor Randall.
Present.
Councillor Richardson.
Present.
I'm.
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 Okay. Okay, we're here, we're here in open session to discuss the process by which we evaluate the city manager, the city attorney judge. First of all, let's make sure that we all have the forms. Does everybody have a form that allows you to evaluate the three people? You should have one for the city attorney, the city manager, and the municipal judge. So everybody okay there?
Look, yeah, I have the city attorney one.
Should have all three, they all three came at once, so, yeah. Now, if there was any.
Were they sent by Daniel?
They were on the desk.
They were sent by email. Oh, no, I'm sorry, they were, go ahead.
They were on the dais, one of our meetings.
Yeah, they were on the dais in one of your meetings.
I wasn't here, so maybe.
Okay, why don't you guys check that and make sure, and if you don't have one of them or all of them, get ahold of Daniel immediately so that you can get the forms, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Now, in past years, what you've done is you've taken the form, you filled it out, you brought it into an executive session, and then the six of us would talk about what grades we have given everybody, we added them together, blah, 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 right?
Right.
Is that the way you would like to proceed this year?
Seemed to work.
Well, there is.
As long as the forms were consistent.
Yeah, well, I've been assured that they are consistent. There is, um, I think Darcy, you would ask that there be some discussion about the municipal judge, because in the years past, I've met with the, um, the staff that deals with the municipal judge, and the staff has given me their input, and then that is the input by which we have graded the municipal judge, or certainly a key part of that evaluation was the input of, uh, the finance staff. So I think you had raised some issues with that, or you asked some questions, or do you want to discuss that, or?
Well, yeah, I thought, um, just in general, as a policy, that, um, how we have it, that, um, the city council is doing the evaluation, it's not really accurate, because we don't have information to do it, and a couple, we've done it a couple of different ways when we're, you were the only one going through the information and presenting it. Um, so I thought it should be clarified. If city council has the ability to hire and fire, then we need a better way to be evaluating the judge, otherwise it's really only the mayor, whoever that happens to be, who's making those decisions for the entire council, and the public should be aware that that's how it is, or, I'm just saying we need to clean up the, um, the process, so, um, you know, I made some notes on the municipal judge's appraisal form, and it was slightly different, like it didn't specify timing, like the city attorney specified timing, and then a lot of the, um, the questions, the rating scale is the same now, which is great, um, but like, under community relations, like, all of the things that are broken out as pretty much individual questions for the attorney are lumped into one rating for the judge, so it's like, represents city with positive outlook, personally projects a positive public image, is courteous to public at all times, seeks to use criticism of self-arsidium positive ways, open and honest with citizens, and then unsatisfactory to outstanding. So that, that's a long list of things that maybe some, maybe not all others, whereas just saying that in the attorney, like, it's broken down, does he represent the city with a positive outlook? You know, so, but again, I don't know currently how we do this. We don't all, every city councillor and the mayor, we do not all know how to rate the judge individually as this. So either we say that we're gonna do it where we get those things back from the attorneys that are in front of him, and then some staff people, and then we all go over all of those things together and decide what we feel is the answer to these questions based on that feedback, or some other way, but we need to do it so it's accurate. And I'm not tied or vested to any particular structure. And I think Rod knows a lot about these kinds of.
I mean, I remember clearly, but didn't we one year ask for letters from the outside regarding the municipal judge?
We did with other attorneys.
And attorneys, et cetera, of course, they all flock together anyway, but at least it was helpful in some areas, you know?
Yeah, so this.
And, and just, Mr. Mayor, just one more thing, I've just done a Dan Hunter search, and all I received by email was the, uh, one for Jonathan, not the other two, so were those handed out?
They were left on the dais, yes. They were left on the dais.
They were left on the dais, what you got from Daniel was the, was Jonathan and Matthew's self-evaluation.
So I got the, I got those two, the self-evaluations.
So what you need is what was apparently left on the dais.
It may be in my pile at home, it's been an interesting few weeks.
Back and check your pile, and if it's not there, get ahold of Daniel and make sure you get those three.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to, um, speak to the human resources director tomorrow morning and have him email out those evaluations to all councillors just as a reminder and as a, you know, FYI.
Yes, I don't need them, because I got mine right here.
We'll get that email too.
Oh, so I can choose to open it or not, okay.
Yes.
All right, is that, we've settled that, okay? All right, so back to Darcy's issue is, um, how, is there any ideas on how you'd like to see the municipal judge evaluated? Uh, we've got one idea to, uh, write letters to attorneys in town to get their feedback, Rod, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, I just, I just recalled that we did that, I don't think we did it last year, but maybe the year before, or two, three years ago, I don't know.
So.
I went into the courtroom and did an observation, so one year.
One year.
So it was authentic in my case, but no one else knew. They didn't have firsthand information on, on his performance, so you couldn't answer that question about how he conducted himself in the courtroom, or any of those questions, you would not have knowledge, so.
So on these that were passed out, which is what I thought we were gonna do is like, talk about process tonight, and I probably misunderstood, um,
No, it is.
He did, uh, I assume that this is the human resource director created a process that he itemized out, and so he did, or I'm just assuming, so each evaluator will complete the form and return it, and he's talking about the defense counsel, and then he's gonna create a composite of evaluation, including individual comments. All responses and comments will be reported anonymously and in a summary format, which I think is good, right, because these people have to do business together, um, and so my thing was just, how are we doing it? Are we just gonna use that composite? Is that what we're agreeing on, or um, our councillor's gonna add additional information, because we have to be fair about the evaluation, we can't be like, well, Darcy went in and sat in and saw something that nobody else did, and her interpretation was that he wasn't very nice about it. You know, like, we have to have the same, just like when we come to council and we make decisions, we can't go do ex parte stuff on our own, we all have to have the same info.
Right, so there's a structural problem, right? We see the city attorney in action, and in a variety of settings, we see the city manager in action, variety of settings. We are unlikely to see the municipal judge, and if we do, it's what?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not watching him at work on a regular basis, most, presumably.
Right, and right now, it hasn't been an issue, right, but at some point, a person, not saying people who are currently here, but down the road, we need a process in place that allows a future council, if they have a future judge who's doing something, to have a way to go through it legitimately and not be so subjective that then it gets thrown out in court or something crazy.
Agreed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just to touch on it, I, I think, um, I'm happy to take a look at other jurisdictions, because we're not the only ones that have this issue. I'll, if it makes sense to the council, unless there's some other, um, really great idea, I, I would, I'd be happy to ping the city attorney listserv to see how other jurisdictions handle the evaluation of a municipal court judge. Um, I can imagine it would be a mixed bag, but, um, for what it's worth, the, the approach that you're describing, Darcy, is the, it's called a three sixty evaluation, right, and you look all around, and I can also try to find some, some good guidance connected with what to do with that influx of information from the public, um, and it's very targeted, right, I think it's a great idea to, um, send the letters to the attorneys that appear before him most frequently, and, uh, maybe some court staff, and some others too. Um, but you're right, once you get all that information, deciding how to evaluate, how to turn that information into an evaluation is a tricky one. So I'll, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I'll try my best to find out.
Yeah. And on the last page for his questionnaires, there's two questionnaires about jury trials, which I don't think we do in there at all, so those probably need to come out of the evaluation.
We're gonna just put not applicable on there.
I think we just remove them from the application, makes the most sense.
So just to.
Are you volunteering to, uh, contact other attorneys as well as other cities?
I'll be certainly contacting other cities and other jurisdictions to determine how their municipal jurisdictions handle their review of their municipal court judges, because again, I, I think, uh, Councillor Long's hit the nail on the head. There is really no connection between this council, as far as I can tell, and its municipal judge, other than that the position of municipal judge is a function of the charter, and it's vested with the council. Um, they're a direct appointee, like the city manager, like the city attorney, and so it, it, it would not be appropriate to have any other reviewing body, for example, the city, the city manager would be an inappropriate choice for evaluating the position of the municipal court judge. It must be with the council. And so let me look into some best practices associated with how you all can meaningfully provide those evaluations. Right?
Okay, I hope you can do that in a timely basis.
Yes.
Forward on this.
I, yeah. Well, with the understanding that, are, are you hoping to implement a new revised procedure for the municipal judge for this current year? I will move, I will move with haste if that's the case.
What, what I would be comfortable with if the rest of council is, which would be, um, to strike those last two questions about the jury, and then maybe come to an agreement here, that for this year, we will use, um, the, um, anonymously compiled information coming back from the, um, staff and also the, um, the attorneys that have dealt with the judge to make our evaluation this year, and if we would like to make a change in the future and get that straightened out, that we take the time and, and do that correctly, to me, that would give us a good, would give us enough information for this year.
That's, it seems logical to me, that proposal.
Might I just add, I, I, I have attended the terms of all municipal courts this year, whenever another attorney has been present. I believe, I believe it's only been two attorneys for this past year, and that's a maybe. One for sure, that the city contracts with frequently as a court-appointed defense counsel, when the city, um, there are a number of open cases from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, that every once in a while, someone will get arrested on an act of arrest warrant that's still around, and so when they get brought in and they're hailed into municipal court for failing to appear for their DUI from twenty seventeen, the court, AKA the city of the DOWs, pays for their legal defense, as we're required to do, um, and it's always been the same attorney, and uh, so I'm, if you're expecting a wealth of attorneys, you know, a, a number of attorneys to respond, I, I wouldn't be so sure.
No, I wouldn't either.
Yeah, it might just be one or two.
I think there's reasons they would not respond. One is that they might be concerned about confidentiality, and they have to work with the judge, so. And Rod?
Maybe you already covered this, Darcy, but I would, I think of the choice of answers, one of them should be unknown, so, so we could check it, because we don't know.
Good point.
On the municipal judge, one, at least.
Well, none of us really know unless you've been to court, and, and I would think even.
That's the answer, I can't do good, whatever, indifferent, high-low. One of them would be either not applicable or don't know.
Well, that's why I always sought the, um, the, um, opinions of the staff, and, uh, why I brought those evaluations to you in the past. So Jonathan's gonna reach out to the attorneys, hopefully we'll get a good response.
From the city attorneys across the state, yes. I will also reach out to the attorneys that have appeared, that I know of, that have appeared in this court this last fiscal year, um, to see whether they would be, uh, open to this, what, um, are you hoping for them to be providing this information connected with the judge's performance on some sort of evaluation form, or are you just hoping for a narrative? Or are you just hoping for a narrative?
I'm not hoping for anything, but on this thing that the, the process that was outlined by Human Resources, it likes, has a specific form, is what he says.
I see that, I haven't seen that. And then I'll of course touch base with our Human Resources Director to confirm that I'm not doing anything I shouldn't be, that he hasn't done already. And I, I'm also, as an idea, since we're talking about process here, one idea could be for the city council to delegate the responsibility of overseeing the municipal judge when it comes for the, you know, just for the purposes of an evaluation for their performance, delegating that responsibility through a resolution to the city manager. Which might, that's just an approach. And it could be, it doesn't need to be the city manager, although I can't imagine who else it would be, but maybe a combination of the city manager and the city attorney. But that, that is also something that you could explore legally without abdicating your responsibilities under the charter.
Okay, so you're going to contact other city attorneys about process, and you're gonna be contacting other local attorneys that have appeared before the judge to get their confidential.
Yes.
My, I'm sure I don't have to tell you that we, it surely should be confidential feedback on their experiences, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the next question would be, to what extent do we want to talk to the staff like I have in the past? Should we do that again? And if so, should, who should do it?
Who's the staff?
Staff is specifically Angie and Lupita, who's the clerk that does all the, works with the judge. She's the lady who sits in the front on the left there.
So we would have potentially one or two, maybe three attorneys views and two staff views that we could draw from.
Those be attorneys that lost their cases? Or won their cases?
Means that we're willing to respond. As I mentioned, I think this last year, it's literally just been one.
Watch a lot of television.
Now, this might have been a different story if this was 2015 or 2012. Eight different types of attorneys, but it's really just been one. We haven't had any cases that have required the use of appointing court-appointed counsel.
Do you have any interaction with our judge?
On the, I appear on behalf of the city as the city prosecutor for those open cases from 2015 to 2018, before the court effectively shut down. As I mentioned, a common way to think about it is, somebody has an active arrest warrant from 2015 for a municipal court case. They get picked up in Hood River one weekend because they're a passenger in a car that gets pulled over, like this happened this year. And that person, their ID was ran, and it turns out they had an active warrant. So, you know, it's an active warrant, it doesn't go away. So they get arrested, and then they have to appear here in front of the judge and explain what happened.
So are you qualified to?
I, I, I've attended, as I mentioned, I would say.
Qualified as more than any of us, that's for sure.
I would say, as far as staff goes, the Finance Director is also the court's administrator, and she has probably the most one-on-one interaction with the judge, aside from the municipal court clerk, who has the most, I think, the most interaction with the judge. After those two, it would certainly be me, as far as interactions with the judge, so that I have knowledge, personal knowledge of his performance. Whether it would be appropriate for me to do that is a question for council. I'll also, and I'll also be asking other city attorneys in the listserv to, to indicate more about what their internal structure looks like. But as a fellow appointee of council, I'm not in a position of supervision over the judge or anything like that. The judge has a tremendous amount of autonomy. But I'm, you know, I, yeah, I certainly have personal knowledge. I can't quite think of any other city staff member, the city manager included, that would have really any interaction with the municipal judge. It's primarily exclusively, rather, the court administrator, the municipal court clerk, and the city attorney.
I would personally feel a lot happier, feel more, feel that it would be more appropriate for you to be interviewed, Jonathan, rather for you to be doing the querying of the staff. Like, for instance, if we were to have, if the mayor were willing, or perhaps Human Resources were willing to speak with you and the court administrator and the court clerk to help us get a sense. I feel like that would be more useful.
Certainly.
With regard to evaluating the judge.
Okay, let's, let's see if we can reach agreement on that. Does anybody have any objection to what Dan just proposed? In that, somebody would interview the court administrator, which is Angie, municipal court clerk, which is Lupita, and the city attorney, regarding their impressions of the municipal judge's performance. Does anybody have a problem with that? Okay, then the question is, who should do that?
I would, I would recommend, Mr. Mayor, that the Human Resources Director take a strong lead on this. At, at least as a facilitator or a compiler of some of this information. Or if they're not, you know, a strong lead on that part of this project, I would also advise that they have a, an otherwise critical role. I don't think it would be terribly inappropriate for a, a team of perhaps the mayor and this, and the Human Resources Director together. I think that that would be a, a strong, a strong approach. But I, I probably would not advise not, I, I, I would certainly advise, including the Human Resources Director in these, the types of interviews, and having them play more of a role than, than not.
Does anybody?
Do you want a role, Rich?
Not particularly.
So would you, would you entertain a motion?
Either that, or where you can throw something out, we'll just get a consensus.
What if we, can we just direct staff, the Human Resources specifically, to the follow-through and interview these three folks that we've already mentioned?
Yeah.
If you're not that interested?
I, I am, I'm not so sure that the city council can just direct a, a staff member that isn't the city manager, or the city attorney, or the municipal judge. You could certainly direct the city manager to direct the Human Resources Director. I think that would be a safer approach, maybe I'm missing something, but.
Need to reevaluate the city attorney.
Well, I would, I would just advise, the city manager.
I'll, I'll call to Matthew, and I will ask him to direct Daniel to interview those three people for the purposes of the municipal judge evaluation, how's that sound?
Good, but does Chief Worthy have any firsthand knowledge as well?
Some of our police officers, oh, I mean, I, now that you mention that, that's a great point, Counselor McLaughlin. The city's codes enforcement officer appears before Judge Corey and the municipal judge frequently. Some police officers do. The animal control officer also has been appearing before the judge quite a bit, now that I think about it. And so there are certainly some law enforcement and law enforcement light, you know, codes enforcement effectively, that might have some good impressions of the judge as well. And I, I don't mean good as in good versus bad. I mean good as in based in reality and accurately reflecting a personal knowledge of the judge's performance. I, I would recommend, yes, the codes enforcement officer as well.
Okay, so we're gonna ask the city manager to ask the HR director to do all this, and we're, and we would ask that the HR director would be the one responsible for filling out the form on the judge, is that correct? Right, as opposed to, you know, several paragraphs of, okay. Okay, is that all, can we wrap up that issue and move on to the next one?
Next stage.
We'll be okay? Okay, all right, now, you also should have received a self-evaluation of the three, of the two. And I have the judges with me right now because you just gave it to me today. So I'm gonna pass out the judge's self-evaluation. Is there anybody here that does, that does not get, did not get the other two self-evaluations?
Did not, but I was out.
Okay, you should have got, you would have gotten an email from, check your emails. And if you didn't get it, or if you can't find it, contact Daniel.
I'll, I'll be asking the HR director to send out an email with the blank evaluations for councils to populate, for council to populate, as well as the completed self-evaluations. Hopefully, the judge also provided a copy of that self-evaluation, Mr. Mayor, to city staff as well. If you're, if he hand-delivered it to you, could you please make a, hand a copy to Amy so she can deliver it to the HR director?
Is anybody else, has, have some of you received or seen the city manager's self-evaluation?
I did, and I only saw the attorneys.
That did it.
You didn't see that one either?
No, just the attorneys. That doesn't mean I made this mistake or missed it, but I didn't see.
I got.
Matthews came fairly early, I'd say, I'm guessing three weeks ago, maybe a month ago.
Well, then I couldn't.
And, and Jonathan's came just recently, last week maybe.
Yeah, last week or the week before, yeah.
Okay, I put your initials on these, so that, Scott, here's yours. And here's Dan's. Here's Rod's. Here's Darcy's. And here's Tim's. Okay. Now, unless anybody has any other issues, we should set up an executive session for sometime in the future, when we give the staff enough time to work on the municipal judge, and give you guys time to get your forms in order. And then we can move on from there. So, does everybody have their calendars?
Yes, I do have a question, if this are final versions of these. There's a question on, oops, maybe it's not the city. On the city attorney, on the, these aren't page numbers. So on the one that says decision-making, it's the second from the last. I know not everybody has this, but this is the city attorneys. And I'll read it out loud because not everybody has it. It's just the general form, not the one completed. So the question is, under decision-making, ability to reach timely decisions and initiate action without being compulsive. And I don't know what, without being compulsive.
I think, I think it should probably say, without having been the person who wrote it, impulsive? I think it means impulsive.
Okay, so.
It's my guess.
So that's like, this is a question before we send it out and have everybody fill it out, like, we all have to know what's the real question, so.
That's my best guess.
Oh, maybe impulsive, okay.
Pages on them?
It's the, it's really the second to the last, and it's actually the last page with actual questions on it. It's, and it's titled decision-making at the very top. And then the last page is like general comments, so I would.
Pages should be numbered.
Yeah, they do need to be, and actually, the question should be numbered too, in case we are getting in there trying to discuss them. It's a little hard to be like, well, you know, third one down on the.
Counselor Long, I had absolutely zero involvement with any of these, and so.
This is not, this is not critical, I thought tonight was like to discuss process.
That's exactly right, you nailed it.
So I, you know, I got a little nerdy.
I'd like it color-coded and a table of contents, please.
Laughlin, if that's the will of the.
Definitions would be good, right?
Should I?
I'm not finding that, maybe I'm.
To do is, I have a couple things that I could send it to Human Resources with it flagged, and he could fix it how he wants everybody to have it before he sends it out, would that be okay?
That'd be great.
Okay, thanks, I'll do that, I wanna.
Oh, there we go.
Mr. Mayor, when it comes to scheduling of the evaluations, just wanted to flag for you and for the council, as you look at some potential dates, my understanding is, the city's budget process has put in a placeholder amount reflecting for the salaries for certain staff here, the city manager, city attorney, and municipal judge, for budget purposes, as we prepare to enter into the budget committee and get that approved and adopted by council. And so I believe that process will be finalized when council fully adopts the budget and approves the budget in June. But I also believe that the city manager's contract and the city attorney's contract both call for these evaluations to be conducted sometime in the month of May. And I think that's to coincide with the city's budget process.
Well, I'm out of town from April 30th through May 16th, which is right through the, up to the budget meeting, so. How much time do we think we need for the HR director to do all his work, interview all those people, and for him to make the corrections that Darcy's gonna tell him about in the forms, right?
Well, just questions that I have, so he can clarify for.
That shouldn't take any time.
Yeah, no, I don't think so.
Today is March 25th, is one month enough time for all that? I would think it is, but.
I would think so.
Okay, is one month enough time for all that? So that we can set up, we can set up a meeting for approximately one month from today, somewhere around in that area? Are you, are you, you got an issue in May though, don't you?
On April 5th through April 18th, so a month would be, okay. Well, the LOC conference is the 25th and 26th of April.
Yep. Okay, so Rod, when you getting back?
15th.
15th?
18th.
18th, that's a Thursday, and the conference starts.
It'll be the first full day, that's a Friday, I think.
Yes, it is.
How about on Friday, April 19th?
About the next week, if possible, is that possible?
Next week is the LOC conference.
Well, the 24th is open, 23rd, 24th.
You know, the, the LOC conference ends on the 23rd, is that correct?
No, it ends on the 27th. LOC is 25, 26, 27, the 23rd and 24th, that's open.
I thought the LOC conference was the 23rd and.
25th and 26th.
Yeah.
Okay, I stand corrected, that's good to know. Okay, what did you say, 24th, Tim, or 23rd?
23rd, 24th, and my calendar's open.
Okay, how's everybody's calendar for April 23rd, Tuesday, or April 24th, Wednesday?
Me, Wednesday would be best.
I can.
Scott, you're okay, Dan?
Yeah, either end of the day is ideal.
What's that?
Either end of the day would be ideal.
Or the end of the day?
Either ending or end.
Oh.
Would be ideal.
Rod? How are you for the 23rd or 24th?
Mr. Mayor, that, if this, if it's on the 23rd, the city typically has a leadership meeting the morning after city council meetings. So to the degree that you would be wanting to speak to the city manager or the city attorney, the morning would be a bit more of a challenge for us, but we.
23rd.
On the 23rd.
The 23rd is also the committee outreach team meeting. I would be going to not be there, but you usually go.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. I have to pick up my daughter in Portland at the airport about 11:30 on the 24th, 23rd is okay.
Okay, the 23rd sounds like later, the later in the day, the better, what, you know, say three or four o'clock, how's that?
Fine for me.
Okay.
Like the 5:30 times, just because it's easy to remember.
Yeah, this, I think this can be rather long, that's the only, I mean, I'm okay with that, it's just, you know, based on past experience, this thing goes on for three or four hours.
What time?
I'd have to call and wake me up, you know.
We'll wake you up during the meeting. Scott, Dan?
That's fine, but I am gonna make, I'm gonna come with the purpose in mind of less than that. Let's, let's try and get this down.
Yeah, well, if you come, come prepared by having your forms all filled out, okay, ready to go.
So three o'clock?
I would say three, I'm sorry.
What time is it now?
We're open, it's three o'clock, I've, I've heard three, three o'clock, and I've heard 5:30, so I don't care.
Two preferences for 5:30.
Okay.
I won't say mine's a preference, I was going with Rod, but I, I'm available anytime, whatever works for the group.
Going with Rod, meaning what, what did he say?
He said he preferred 5:30, our regular meeting time, it's easy to remember, and we feel the urgency.
Right, and I pointed out, it could be late in the night, but, okay, 5:30, Tuesday, April 23rd, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It might be helpful to have a backup time. My understanding is, this is, this would be the same meeting that the council might want to meet with the municipal judge and city attorney and city manager. I'm looking at my calendar as a city attorney, and I, I am available, but I, the city manager isn't here, and neither is the judge. And so pending their availability, it might be beneficial for the council to have a backup time just in case, while you're all here looking at your calendars. Maybe it seemed like Wednesday worked for others, the 24th, maybe if the 23rd doesn't work, maybe it might be helpful for council to think about a time for Wednesday as well, just in case.
I have to, I might have something on Wednesday at seven.
And also, also, this can be done via doodle poll at some future date. And also, also, this can be done via doodle poll at some future date.
I think that's a good point, if the other two are not available, let's do a doodle poll. Otherwise, let's just stick with this for right now.
Okay, that, that works as well.
Oh, good. Okay, I do not have a conflict, okay. Okay, we have a plan? Everybody? We're okay with everything? Okay. To just summarize, Jonathan's going to do some work about with other city attorneys in Oregon and local attorneys regarding municipal judge. I'm going to talk to Matthew about directing Daniel to interview five different people, including police department and the animal control officer, the city attorney, municipal court clerk, and the court administrator regarding the judge. You guys are going to check your forms to make sure you have evaluation forms for the three and that you have self-evaluations for the three. And if you don't, get ahold of Janet, Jonathan, or Daniel and get those. And then Darcy, you just, you had mentioned going through, making some questions about the form itself and getting with-
Yeah, I'll just work with the HR director for clarification, just so make sure every counselor's on the same page for what a question means when we answer it.
And then our next meeting is 5:30, April 23rd. Should we have dinner at that? You guys want to get some food? Thanks, Amy.
We, Mr. Mayor, I believe we do have a meeting on April 8th, a traditional regular city council meeting for the 23rd. You said our next meeting is the 23rd.
I meant regarding this, but yeah.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify.
Okay, April 23rd, 5:30. And then if that doesn't work for some reason, we're going to send a doodle poll out.
Yes on the dinner question.
And then yes on the dinner question. Okay. Any other business come before the city council? Is there anyone in the audience who would like any input on our procedures here today? Yeah, we're also going to be looking into evaluating the press. Okay, with that, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Okay.